Ladies and gentlemen, the man of the hour is here. Right before I bring him in, I want to recognize the members of his entourage who have traveled with him. And they are Chief Steve Onyamechi, Chief Alosee Agowah, and Nze Pira Obumike. These are members of his entourage. Ladies and gentlemen, it is my pleasure to now usher into the hall a man of great humility and accomplishment, Mr. Frank Inegi Oom, founding chairman, CEO ABC Transport PLC, and frontline gubernatorial candidate for all progressive grand alliance Afgha. Give a round of applause. He's a businessman who has revolutionized road transportation in Nigeria. A proven leader and job creator. He is on a mission to rebuild Imo State. And he has a vision to create entrepreneurial opportunities as well as employment for our youth in Imo State and Nigeria. Ladies and gentlemen, you will be hearing more about him as the evening goes on. But for now, let us rise up and applaud and see Mr. Frank Inegi. Thank you. Please give him a round of applause. Give him a warm New Jersey welcome. Let me once again recognize the members of his entourage who have been traveling with the candidate, Chief Steve Onyamechi, Chief Alosee Agowah, Nze Pira Obumike. Thank you very much. Welcome to New Jersey. Ladies and gentlemen, now that Mr. Inegi is here, he didn't want us to say opening prayers in his absence. So now let me call on a man of God who is in the house, who has graciously agreed to lead us in prayers in the absence of the person that has been designated for this function. I'm very happy to call on Bishop Dr. Angus Chikadibia to lead us in prayers. Ladies and gentlemen, please give the bishop a round of applause. Thank you.
Praise the Lord. Bumumano, Imo State, Tengenemo no, Igweke Nemo no, Nigeria Kene mo no. Shall we be on our feet, sir, again? As we honor God of heaven, he is the king of all kings. He is the maker, the man that makes and the unmake a man. He leaves you and he can bring another person down. He is the almighty, the king of all kings, the god of all gods. Through God and by whom all things were created. Kings make justice and laws that will last and will be everlasting. So today, we recognize him, the almighty Great One, the maker of the heaven and the earth. We created you. Without him, you are nothing. Whoever you are, outside Christ Jesus, you are nobody. Pray today that the spirit of Christ be with everyone of us here in Jesus' name. Great one, to you alone be all the glory for the opportunity today to be in your presence. We have a purpose for coming to this meeting today. Thank you for the candidate who recognizes your person, who recognizes your authority and your supremacy, who honors you today. Thank you for his life. It is written that them that honor you, you will honor. Because he has honored you today, I pray to honor him in the name of Jesus. Everyone of us who has come out today from all our works and commitments to great dislocation, honor will never fail anybody here, in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. We pray that the spirit of grace, the spirit of wisdom, the spirit of peace, the spirit of understanding rest upon this great congregation. And let the will of the almighty God alone be done. Let your purpose be established. And let your kingdom come in our midst. And let your way be done. Receive all our praise, Father of light. Receive all our glory, King of heaven and earth. Be exalted and be lifted up. Be magnified forevermore in the name of Jesus Christ. And therefore resist every contradiction. I revoke all manipulations, all antics of Satan, every operation and manipulation of any kind from the beat of darkness. I curse them this day. I demand that the oppression come to nothing. I dismay it in the name of Jesus. Even as I immerse this congregation into the ocean of the blood of Jesus Christ. And let the counsel of the Lord stand strong. Let God's purpose prevail and the name of Jesus be glorified. At the end, let blessing be given to humanity, to the glory of God. Thank you, great Father, in the mighty name of Jesus. As I open this meeting in the name of God the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Ghost in Jesus' mighty name. And everybody shout a big amen. Can I now drink quality hallelujah? Shall we go? Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Give Jesus a hand, please.
Thank you, Bishop. Thank you. Like I said before, the candidate did not want this wonderful prayer said before he arrived. And as you can see, he is quite pleased about it. So now, the Lord has blessed the occasion and we can now proceed. Let me quickly welcome a few of the committed supporters for this occasion who just arrived. I believe I did call Chief Sa Oliva. I believe I did. Please make sure he's seated. Also, also Chief Innocent Enweri is also in the house. Chief Innocent Enweri, are you here? Yes. Let me also call on Mazi and Mrs. Emma Odenakachi. Mazi and Mrs. Odenakachi. You're good where you are? Terrific, welcome. Chief Oliver Obukwu is also in the house. You're here without your law. Please make sure that he's seated. As we proceed, this is an Igbo occasion. And we all know you have not been properly welcomed to an Igbo home occasion if you have not been presented with the color knot. I have no business with that. So I'm going to recuse myself and hand over the microphone to one of the organizers of this event. And by the way, I believe you will also recognize you will also be recognizing the members of the committee or if you want me to do so, I shall. All right. Then let me do that quickly and then I'll hand over to you for the color knot. Ladies and gentlemen, it takes a great deal of effort to organize an occasion like this and have this kind of turnout, especially on a Sunday. So I want to quickly recognize the people that made it happen. If I leave out anyone, call that to my attention. And by the way, I should have said from the beginning, all protocols observed. When I call you, I may not have said all your titles, but all protocols observed. Now, for the planning committee, and this is in no particular order, Mr. Oke Lawrence Anyamun. Chief Mike Odebo Okosi. Doctor Mrs. Vicky Moro Adesembe. Chief Doctor Adanze Agowah Rekonampah. Mr. Collins Akubueze. Last but not least, on my list for now is High Chief Charles Ake Otroyoto. Give them a round of applause. Thank you. Okay. And now I'm going to quickly vamoose and hand over the microphone for the color note presentation to Chief Mike Odebo Okosi. Over to you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ezebion. So I'm here with logic. I have one party up here, the chairman of this occasion, our wonderful brother, Yolano Hereman, Doctor Obi Lo, Wan Odeja Gyalan. Thank you. Other than the children, I'm just in the kitchen now. I'm buying a lot of butter. I won't put a chief five. You have to be quiet like a cheetah. So you have to have your own. Doctor Obi Lo is a high chief. They're talking about no men. I have been talking because of time. I have a power to talk to you. I gave you a timing problem. So I have been talking about how to make a new one. Wait, wait. Come here, come to your chair. Can we keep moving forward?
My corrector, because a man has one of them work. One man, one man. They call naiku. They come major. I'm going to go on. I'm going to go on. So I'm going to do this. I know what I do. I'm going to go. I just I'm busy. I'm going to go. I don't mind. I'm going to go. 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 Okay, I'm going to go. One of them work. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. Okay, okay, okay. But it goes now. I'm going to go. 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 I'm going to go.
Okay. And when I'm here, I'm going to go. From any other states outside Ibo land, I'm going to go. Oh, everybody. And now I have the current ex-chairman of Wadi Go Congress. And Chief Ewan, former chairman of Wadi Go Congress. So I want a lot of them here. And the deputy mayor over here.
I'm going to go. I'm going to go. They call everybody.
I'm not going to go. One of my brother. I think they will. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. There we go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. Okay. And Chief Ewan, because he got he got the back. I got here. He told me about.
I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go.
Thank you very much. And when you go, they not here, okay, you go. Who do I call me? I'm here. Do I call me one of the way?
I'm going to go. 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 Rapido Frank, you're welcome. I'm going to go. 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 So I'm going to go. 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 I'm going to go.
The one for the mayor. I got him. He got me with the one for president. I I didn't I'm watching for president today. I on behalf of me. If we wait for the president. Oh, when the president does, I'm not here. Oh, no, I'm not here. There we go. I've got him as president. I'm going to go. I got the microphone back to the NC. And Mrs. NC, Madam NC, Mrs. Ezebion, over to you.
Oh, Mrs. NC, I'm not. I'll answer anything for now. Thank you. So you have been properly welcomed. In the interest of time, I'm going to be moving very quickly through the program. And at this time, I'm going to hand over the microphone to the co-chair of this occasion to give us his opening remarks. Ladies and gentlemen, put your hands together for Chief Doctor Obi Lo. And in saying that, I know I'm skipping some of his titles. All protocols observed.
I'm going to go. I'm going to go. The excellency, members of the high table, Eka Lelmon, I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I know it would be difficult for me to finish everything in Igbo, but at the same time, I'm going to go. 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 In the whole day, I'm going to go. I'm going to go. Otso otso marida wunge. Otso wa je me diye, Nigeria was here, food bar. Only chatambe Obama, run gap for presidency. It was in, uh, Pennsylvania. That's when people have lost hope. When there is no hope anymore in a system. They cling to their religion, they cling to their Bible. People, those who didn't understand where he was coming. They weren't happy with that comment. But it was the reality of the time. Those of you who read Tale of Two Cities during the French Revolution. Understood the debt, the debt of anger, frustration. The hopelessness of the people at the time. Even to the point that Jerry Crunch, if you remember. Did not even trust the camel. At that time, there was no cars, no bicycles. But he developed that fear because the system has been eroded. Among how in Nigeria, almost every year. Every year, I go to Nigeria to take care of the sick. Those who have been neglected by our society, those who have lost hope. And the, the system is so numb that you can see babies. When I was growing up, my mom, if he says, if my mom will tell us that somebody died. The fear of all of us as kids growing up. My mom would come home at that time and would carry water, meet her outside to wash her hand. Because it was very rare for people to die. But at this time, in our system, in our culture, in our own state, in our whole country. The death rate is so alarming that nobody cares anymore. When my uncle died, kids were running around that, his, uh, where he was dead, in his room. And they were laughing. That's how, what has happened in our system. I know I will bore you with, with, because, um, when I get to that point, I get emotional. Because as a physician, what I see is so alarming, is so numbing. So tonight, my brother, I met you last time at Chief Ewan's house. I looked at your face, I said, maybe that is hope for our country, uh, for our community, for our state. So I'm not going to talk too much, if you let me. So I wish you well. And I know that you did not come here to deceive us. You did not come here to say it is the old time, the same time, the same thing. So you have a challenge in your hands. These people here, they're looking at you. I think you make a difference and I hope you realize that you come here today. That these voices here today will not forget that you're here today. And I wish you well, thank you, God bless you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I believe that the candidate represents a new breed of leadership for Nigeria. A new breed of leadership for Imo State, Ndiibo and Nigeria. Amen? So now, uh, the candidate is going to be officially presented to you by one who knows him better than I do. And in the interest of time, we're going to keep it nice and sweet, right? So let me hand the microphone to Oke Lawrence Anyawu to present the candidate.
Um, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Governor, so, Special Representative, the senior special advisor, Mr. Derek Green. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen. Uh, it's my honor and privilege to present to you. A man I feel proud to call my friend and leader. The man I've known for the past that it's something he is. A man I've come to know that even in the midst of his towering achievements, he's full of humility. He condones himself in God's simplicity. When I say this, it's because of the interactions we have had. Some time ago, uh, in the nineties, middle nineties or there about. We had attended a ceremony together in Omoakolo, one of our mutual friends' father was being knighted. And all of a sudden, Frank got up and started helping out to suck gas. Ostensibly to ensure that everybody was taken care of. His action that they, considering his achievement, taught me a lesson in humility. I don't want to go say much because of time constraints about his achievement. Because we put it there on the PowerPoint. But his ingenuity in the business sector and him, the National Director Award of Office of the Nigeria, which was conferring him by President Olusegu Apasanjo. His ingenuity in business also gave rise to Fashola. The former Lagos State governor also gave him an award. It's right there also displayed, you can read that. He is a philanthropist. He's a man who is passionate about what he can do to help, um, enhance the living condition of mankind. This is evidence in the quality of companies he runs, the group of companies. The corporate culture there is one that is designed to respect the inherent dignity uh, of employees and customers alike. We are dealing with a situation where government cannot pay salaries, pay engineers and all the rest of them. And here you have a man in his employment, whom some people have stayed with him for twenty something, thirty years. Very simply, as part of an ongoing effort to foster staff morale through, um, uh, you know, uh, rewards and bonuses. Two of the pioneer drivers in his company, when he started ABC two years ago, were giving bosses. The transportation industry is an industry that is characterized by high employee turnover rate. But yet, you see somebody staying twenty five years there. That speaks bottom of the kind of boss they have. So if he created that corporate culture, where employees in the private sector feel comfortable, have job security, through good regulations and all the rest of them. When we entrust him with the leadership of Imo State, I have known that he will do better for all of us. Um, in the words of a second republic politician, when he was asked, um, a question. Now you have been appointed ambassador extraordinary and play potentially. What would you do if you go to a country where there's a resident envoy? His response was, when I go there, I'll confine with a resident ambassador. And you will know that extraordinary circumstance has brought an extraordinary man. Today in Imo State, we are dealing with the extraordinary circumstance of a man we elected to the most esteemed position in our state. Rendering the entire three acts of government essentially ineffective by dictatorial policies. Consequently, this has led to unbridled corruption and reckless disregard for the rule of law and order. This is the price of complacency and lack of due diligence in subjecting those we trust, uh, with public leadership to public scrutiny. We have to do that, we have to hold them from the beginning and Frank is here to do that today. He is bold and I want to say I thank him in a special way for answering the call of Imo Petros. Because Islam, they've been calling on him, finally he answered. So the deplorable condition of our state, rules, infrastructure facilities has compelled an extraordinary man in the personal friend image to come and help rebuild Imo State. So I will start here and call on him to come and present to us his strategic action plan for rebuilding Imo State, Mr. Frank.
Uh, uh, Oke Lawrence, thank you very much for those kind words. Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, other members of the high table, Biko no, uh, because I understand that, uh, Oga Gala, HUo. Semra, I appreciate you know no what, aroge, idiano. Um, let me also, uh, start by relying on the already established protocol. And if I also broke your protocol when I came in, I didn't want to be oshade. I didn't want to dance into this place because I didn't come here to celebrate. And, um, some people have addressed me as the excellency, I'm not here excellency, I am not one. And I happen to. I've come here, I mean, the United States to engage with the diaspora. As maybe to monne monni Imo State. Ka ekogo di he basara, Imo State tani, and they are United States. Before my, they are United States. A, 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 comments. Ne may engage, neither saw, ndi, abka. And I, I talk about me, people can record that I wasn't a politician, I'm not a politician. Ne yu, una yala, Ndiibo kele nu, kele nu, biga go no la, shre, yazare. I respect everybody, no kocho kunonga, ekele kura mono. Imo State, I mean. Nineteen seventy six, so by, uh, thirteen, ke create Imo State. And Lululanya, in the history of Nigeria, for those of us who need Imo State. Having a state, Abora, Imo State. Who, one of the greatest joys I knew this is after independence. During independence, uh, some of us, eh, go inaka, our parents go, I need a kind of joy in the Nigerian way. Because Nigeria won't know one, that was the story. So K. E. Trinbo State in nineteen seventy six, so no la, we could open money, rejoice here that we now have our own state. Some of you remember what happened. First of all, I am to the night, I am where they are, our own state. Oh, we hola na pa, nyane ka gasyo we, na nyama gasyo we. That was the joy all of us had. And this counting, we are talking about forty two years ago. Onyo hola, look at forty two years. Why did we rejoice? We were giving a state, some people describe it as a state flowing with milk and honey. Anyo, milk and honey, we were giving a state, they endowed with great natural resources. Imo State is a very producing state, I don't know if many of you realize. If Nigeria exports two billion barrels, Imo State on daily basis is exporting about twenty six thousand barrels of oil. Imo State has a program reserve of about forty billion barrels, forty million barrels of oil. We have huge gas deposits. Up to, to a trillion cubic feet of gas, I already must it. I'm just trying to tell you the kind of state we inherited. We also inherited a central location, a location that other states envy. We are called eastern heartland, why we call eastern heartland? We arrive in the middle of the southeastern and south-southern states. In addition to the location of Imo State, Imo State is also endowed with great human resources. Our brothers and sisters in the diaspora, we know what you have achieved, we know the faith you have achieved. Imo State was on creation the envy of other states. This is our story. Imo State is supposed to be, or is potentially the fifth richest state in the country. Imo State have the highest literacy level in Nigeria, ninety seven point five percent. Go through the records until recently, Imo State had the best performance in West African school certificate. Many of you can testify to that until recently. And even currently, Imo State has the highest subscription to JAMA. We, we present more candidates than any other state. What does that tell you about our intellectual resources? Number one, potentially number one in everywhere. If you look at of, uh, medical school enrollment, Imo State has been number one for the past five years. This is our story, story of potentials, story of wells, story of milk and honey. Sees the highest allocation, monthly, gross. Highest, based on our population, based on the number of local governments. But still, Imo State is the most indebted of all the southern states. Two thousand and sixteen, ninety three billion B O's. All this you can go to debt management office website, you will get that. If you look at the national competitive index, Imo State is number twenty eight. In terms of how do you utilize the resources and how. You go to ease of doing business index, Imo State is number thirty four, over thirty six. Meaning that it's more difficult to do business in Imo State than in thirty three other states. Where endowed with high population. And when you go to many countries, countries like United States, countries like China. The population is what they are using to be able to create a market within themselves. Imo State has an estimated population of five point three million people. If you're struggling from the land, last sentence, look at the population growth. What does this mean? If Imo State was to be a country, Imo State would be the hundred and seventeenth country in the world. Out of the hundred and ninety five countries recognized by the United Nations. That means that we're about the size of Finland, we're bigger than Ireland, we're bigger than Pakistan, I mean, sorry, Palestine. That means that we're about the size of Finland, we're bigger than Ireland, we're bigger than Pakistan, I mean, sorry, Palestine. Of course, I don't want to mention the small country, we're bigger than Congo. So population is not our problem, market is not our problem, location is not our problem. Natural resource is not our problem. And man, as you know, what is the problem of Imo State? Why do we have this situation? I don't give anybody cancer. So just, why is it quiet this way? Leadership, all of you have said it, all of us know it, is leadership. When we had Samuel Onunakambwe. Samuel Onunakambwe. And started building on it. Some of the things he did, you can still remember. 21 industries, then we had in the old Imo State, we had 21 in local governments. And then he started creating industries in all the local governments. He gave us 21 industries. Today, one of the best hotels in the southeast is still Concord Hotel. That's from Sanon Bakwe. You go airport, I love you fly through, you go airport, that's Sanon Bakwe. And so on and so forth. And they crowned it all by creating a power station at Amarak. How many of you remember Amarak Power Station? All these things were done in four years. Oil price between $9 and $12. We've also stayed in Imo State when oil price are currently $120. Currently, we are talking about oil price of $76 to $80, isn't it? And what is our situation today? Out of the 5.3 million people we have, we have an estimated underemployed and unemployed people of about 1 billion, our young people. These are the symptoms of bad leadership, and this is what we have been struggling with. And this is a message I bring to you. My name is about leadership. That is the message in Jirin, yeah? Knowing that this is 2018, we are getting into another election year when we have the opportunity to change the way things happen in our state, to change leadership. And then, of course, what we have done over the period is that, politics is a dirty democracy. And so we leave it for the politicians, the typical, the core politicians, as we call them. Let's leave it for them. And it's getting to a point where all of you, almost everybody here receives a text message, a phone call by 3 AM from home. Money. Almost everybody here. The GDP of Imo State, what the money comes into Imo State, into our economy, 150% of it is coming from the diaspora. We don't have local economy. You are the people bringing the money, sustaining us. And we begin to ask, how long shall we continue this way? How long shall we continue to look at those people we call the typical politicians, the core politicians, to come in every four years, give us a form for winning election? Take our mandate, run our state the way they like, and then we continue setting money up every year, I mean, every day. This is our sad situation in Imo State. This is a state with the number of unemployed people I talked about, that has the potential to create jobs primarily by its location in the center. A study by Mackenzie Global Institute in 2015 identifies the second largest consumer cluster in Nigeria after Lagos as a six-city cluster. The six-city cluster would be the cities between Lagos, Abba, Onnacha, Endoko, Benin. And when you look at these six cities, of course worry. When you look at these six cities, you find Imo State sitting right at the middle. This is God's endowment for us to create jobs and get people working. But still, because of bad leadership, we are unable to do anything. Ladies and gentlemen, omonene. Oh my God, yine me no Imo State. And he has gone on to further years. All the good things in Agamahabia. Abba, I've been meeting Imo State. And with Frank Nedge. I have the honor of the Officer of the Order of the Niger, 2014, and the graduate of the University of Nigeria, 1982. I have stayed and worked in Oweri for the past 35 years. I hear a period. That was a company I set up in 98, sorry, 91 Table Road. With one table and one staff. Today, I operate from 37 locations within Nigeria and outside Nigeria. Today, I employ about 2,500 people. More than 1,500 of them are indigence of Imo State. While I have lived in these states for this period, I have felt it, I know it, I have seen the problems. I have seen Imo State rise, like all of you acknowledged during Sanon Bakwe. I have also seen Imo State go down. And I've also seen Imo State lying down as it is lying down today. Imo State is in great danger. That if we don't do anything today, if we don't do anything, then I'm predicting that in the next four years, in the next 30 years, it will be impossible for you people to go home. I want you to make it somewhere. It is a very sad thing. And this is why, okay, I'm here, and I saw a party set in their party situation. I didn't feel it was the right one. There'll be time for parties. But first of all, the message today is that you people in the diaspora, ni mo, let us take back our state. Let us take back our state. This is the message for today. Do we have the example of people who have taken back their states? In 2003, schools were a strike on one day in Annabrah State. Do you remember? Annabrah State, 2003, they didn't go to school. They had gotten to the stage, we've gotten to there, where they got further as the people who dictated how politics will go, who first of all, they don't have revenue, and then there won't be, then there won't be money to pay teachers. And children were at home. It took Annabrah professionals, it took Annabrah diaspora to sit down and say enough is enough. Enough is enough. And this is the setting we have in Imo State today. It was a setting that prompt people like Nigege and Bitodin. And today, do you hear about Annabrah State? Do you hear pensioners complain? Do you hear about salary benefits, the key days? Do you hear about security issues? In 2015, federal government said, look, if you can't pay salaries, we'll give you a bailout fund. Imo State took 26 billion betals. Annabrah said, we don't need their money, we are not taking it. There's some Imo State that gets more than they do than Annabrah. There's some Imo State that has 163 oil wells. Annabrah doesn't produce oil. Any state doesn't produce oil. And we say, what is the problem? And we say it is leadership. Whatever we are saying today is symptom of bad leadership. And we must change this. If we don't change it, it will get worse. This is the reason, ladies and gentlemen, I said I will come to talk to you today. Today, the girl I was in Dallas, yesterday I was in Atlanta. Tomorrow, we are going to connect across, on the 29th or so, we are going to California. We are talking to Imo Indians. I'm presenting myself. I've been a businessman. And I could as well say, having run ABC for 25 years, taken it to the stock market, I could as well go home and start drinking coffee, drinking champagne. And my dividends. But what will happen to our children? What will happen to our grandchildren? They will ask us questions. There's some questions all of you will answer if we don't take back our state today. What are we going to do differently? I created an organization called the Rebuild Imo Organization. And for the past two years, past it almost, we have sat down, we had reviewed the problem with the state. And we had prioritized areas of great impact in the state. We looked at the issue of job creation. We looked at the issue of health. We looked at the issue of education. And of course, service services and service service reforms and other areas, security and the rest of them, we also looked at them. But first of all, I am coming to address the economy of Imo State. Because unless we rebuild and restart the economy of Imo State, nothing will happen, nothing will change. And this was what we sought to do, when you created 21 industries, when you gave us an airport. When you created a power plant. Of all those planes that we created, how many of them are still there? How many more have been created? Maybe the only city there now is still there, Imo Airport. And you know why it's still there?
Because they use it to carry our money out.
I think it's still there because it's managed by the Federal Labor Authority. I think it's still there. Because what has happened is vandalization of our state economy. Some of you who were at home a couple of years back, Newman and Amarak Power Station was dismantled, loaded in a vehicle and taken away. Do you remember some of them? Even two years ago, the Sutai factory, which was under construction, it hadn't been fitted. And all the equipment had been there waiting for somebody to start it. The current government went there, found everything and removed it, promising that you are going to bring. The videos are on YouTube, check, go to YouTube, Sutai Factory, you see our government. Saying he was going to cut away everything because they're obsolete and now build a brand new one. Today, that place is the Kasaba Farm, the villagers have entered again. So what has happened? We need to build a state where residents and indigence can stay and realize your objectives, realize their potentials. We are not saying that people will not leave the state, but people should leave because they want to leave. We have a beautiful state. I'll give you the parameters. I'll give you what they have, natural resources, location, intellectual resources. So what is the problem? And that problem is the one we have the opportunity to solve now. Sovereign it is by now looking at a kind of leadership which we will recruit, because it's by recruitment. I'm going to focus on agriculture, emphasis on palm production, Kasaba, value chain, all these have been studied. And then, of course, livestock, things like poultry, pig. Remember that I've told poultry? The lady who here is forty of this. For palm oil production, I'm not looking at other palm, because other palm is first with so many litigation today from the staff, from banks, from people who have listed. We are going to use smallholder oil palm farming to recreate another 6,000 hectares. Other palm is 4,300 hectares. And if we do this with commitment, by the end of two years, we should be building oil processing plant, I mean plants, for Imo State. We are going to look at light industries. Dominical industrial estate has 254 cars. As we speak, we have less than 10 operated, Coca-Cola and about nine others operated. And we have more than 1 million of our young people looking for jobs. Then the tech pillar is going to be tolerated. We are going to take advantage of our location to bring more people to come to Imo State. These things are not rocket science. These things require commitment. And this commitment can only come from somebody who has done it before. When I say I will create jobs, I have created jobs. When I was calling the local governments, when I was calling the local governments, I went with my list. And the list of local governments I have employees from are the ones that I have to deny. There are some local governments I have more than 200 employees in my imagination, both today and today. So when I say I'm going to create opportunities for job creation, I'm telling you what I have done. And when I tell you that I know the problem of Imo State, I'm telling you because I have been in Imo State for the past five years consistently, despite the challenges. Apart from Sanon Bakwe, there is no other person who has governed Imo State that has lived in Imo State. Think about it. Of course, you know this man, he was a lawyer in Lagos. Actually, good one, an accountant and a patent coach. He came back to, or he came from Lagos. Our Ghanaian came from jobs. Have you thought of that? And as we speak now, people are coming back from Lagos, from all the cities, creating foundations, emergency foundations, emergency philanthropy in Imo State, trying to make you vote for them again. This is exactly what is happening, and this is where we are getting the trunk. Have you thought of that? There nobody that has governed Imo State apart from Sanon Bakwe, who was a lawyer in Aba, has never lived in Imo State. I lived in Imo State, I lived there, I know it, I felt it, I paid taxes in Imo State for 35 years. I have 35 tax clearances from Imo State. As a matter of fact, I paid the highest tax in Imo State through PAYE. I have a salary bill of 81 million every month. That's my salary bill for my group. So I'm not coming to seek leadership or to seek governance of Imo State because I'm looking for work to do. It's because all of us are involved, and if we keep quiet, we will all suffer. It's a sacrifice I have to make, and you too have to make the sacrifice by supporting the cause. And this is why I'm talking to the diaspora. Amongst other people in Imo State, we're having great buying, people are seeing what we are talking about, people are buying in. This is your turn for us to review what I have said, make your comments, ask questions, make suggestions. But most importantly, if you continue to respond your 3am text messages and calls, and you send money there without making it pure into the creation of the right leadership. That trend will continue. People look at them, the night is far gone, I don't want to, if I continue to tell you the story of Imo State, I'm just trying to suspend the PowerPoint and just talk to you freely. Discuss the issues, and I think we can find some minutes to also discuss this. Let me have your thoughts about what we can do differently. Going forward from two thousand and nineteen, because there were.
Ladies and gentlemen, when I introduced him, I told you he was a man on a mission with a vision for Imo State. Please give him a resounding round of applause. You will have an opportunity to hear more from him because he is anxious to take your questions and respond to them. But let's take ten, fifteen minutes to get something to eat. Doctor Mrs. Waru tells me the food is ready, and so let's just quickly get something to eat. I will send tables to get their food. And then, once we've gotten our food and settled down, we will quickly continue with the question and answer session as long as the candidate is ready. If you have not already written down your questions, please do so. And Cornelius Akubese and Chief Doctor Adenza Gowa will come around to collect them. DJ Tavas.